I'm stopping down.
Ah, everybody's not here. This is like this, we're gonna start about a minute early. That's nobody gets to start about a minute early. Oh, so I said no, no starter? Oh, go. Well, that's right. Let's see all y'all here tonight. Got a nice crowd. Appreciate y'all coming out here. But it could've gone rainy night, but it wasn't so far. So you feel it. Did everybody hear me again? Hey, can you hear me again? Can you hear? I'm not sure. Everybody here? Okay. So. That's okay. It's not your fault. I mean, I don't talk very well half the time. I have never screamed yet.
You hate more ghosts.
We got good senses. That helps us a lot. I appreciate that, too. And thanks, I bless everybody here. And we're gonna start off with prayer. And we'll have a place to leave us. And tonight, I want you to do something a little bit different. Our prayer goes on to all say together, Lord prayer. At this time. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, in the name of his Jesus Christ. Give us this day our daily bread, and give us our comforts, and we give ourselves things against us, and lead us not to temptation, but to the resurrection of the new soul. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and glory, forever. Amen. Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, in the highest court, with liberty and justice for all. Thank y'all. Okay, we're gonna start off tonight with citizens' comments. We got a lot of people here, and a lot of people had a lot to say, so it was probably three minutes before the end. Steve, you will go first?
Can I say something before I say, if you would, when somebody's up here talking, if everybody back here will not comment, or talk, or say anything while somebody's up here talking, and whoever's talking, please don't address those that's back here. Address the council. That way, we can keep the comments civil, please.
I'm not no pro speaker. I ain't a pro, but I can't hardly get around. First off, I want to say.
Steve, did you say your full name?
Oh, Steve Gunner, 5965 Carter Street.
Thank you.
I want to commend Dennis on the job he does. I don't think a lot of times people realize what he does. But all the certifications, classifications, everything that he holds to do that job. I understand he needs some help. I'm just not sure how to go about it. I know a lot of people want a full-time mayor. I'm not a hundred percent full, full-time mayor. I think if we get a full-time mayor, sixty-seven thousand is a lot of money for three thousand people. Gazeblow only has forty-five thousand people. Or I say only, forty-five thousand people is a lot of people, and their mayor don't match for fifty-five thousand. That's public record. Anybody can go on there and look it up. I think Dennis probably needs some help. Like I said, I'm not sure how to go about that. I feel like Joe got voted in as part-time mayor. And I feel like he oughta do his turn before y'all ever talk about a full-time mayor. Because I feel like if the full-time mayor is gonna have to help Dennis, they need to have the same classifications and certifications that Dennis has got. People don't realize this sewer and water is a safety issue. And it's for all of us, to keep all of us safe. Now, I have one more thing I'd like to say before I leave. I reached out to Tony, Tony Cornet. First time I've ever reached out to a city council person. And I appreciated him talking to me. We had a forty-five minute talk. He enlightened me on some things. I hope I enlightened him on some things. I've lived here my whole life, originally from Tennessee, but I call this home. And I do like the small-town environment. I know the room. And you got, there gonna be some give with some take. I just encourage everybody in the future to reach out to your council person. I'm as bad as anybody about getting on Facebook. Facebook ain't the place to do it. If you got an issue with this town, your butt needs to be right here, talking to the people right up there. You need to stay off Facebook, because that's where your rumors start. There's a lot of accusations made on Facebook that's not true. And I was, like I say, I was enlightened on a lot of this stuff by talking to Tony. And I appreciate y'all letting me talk. I'm gonna excuse myself for health issues, but like I say, I appreciate everything y'all do for us. Have you better?
Thanks, Steve. Appreciate you. Next.
All right, we can go ahead. Uh, this issue is why public meetings with city officials are necessary. Regardless of the positions or status, everyone wants to plan for the future and to have the opportunity to be a part of the planning process, rather than you literally affect them and the picture of our city. Need help behind closed doors, don't afford us the chance to offer our input about the decisions affecting us. Are you only willing, seeking, and selling for things that will benefit you and your desires? Or are you truly concerned with taking the self-collected decisions that benefit all? This need to know is reason why we attend city council meetings, which are always been offered to the public as well as they should be. Citizens like myself and others, or our city of people, that start asking and seeking information from us after what we want to see happen to the people of the city. There should be no reason this cannot be done openly. We are living in a time of great change in our area, and the underlying importance that developed in the midst of swift change must be addressed. You will represent the citizens alone to ask us, and we'll tell you our concerns. No matter how we get our feelings hurt or feeling dissatisfied in life, we must find a way to repel it and keep going for the good of all involved. When we do this, a better outlook on life and the peace of mind that we so desire will follow. It is foregone important what God sees in us than what our fellow human beings see on the outside of us. Don't let people put a negative label on you, because that is what people that don't like you to present your positive thinking will do. So as the saying goes, it's not enough to reach for the side you have to reach for them. Reach out and take hold of the future with our hands in your own, and we can make the future a giant volume for all of us having choice to make. Do we want God and the fellow things alike to be cast on the dog's teeth? There are tires when you will leave some people behind, because their way of thinking just isn't right. Pass on towards the positive and productive goals that make all of us better. It is past time for all of us to awaken and start looking forward to accomplish the goals that really matter. Please don't forget what and why you were elected. You were elected to serve the people and implement and plan to improve everyone's life, not and view. I want to tell each and every one of you how much I appreciate your concern, love, help, and devotion. Do what you must for the people, all the people, and by the people. How you respond to an offense will determine your future. Remember, there were always people who offended or disagreed, but don't stop striving for success. Expect the unexpected, because that's what you will eventually face. Don't neglect to tell yourselves or your children to expect the unexpected things to come in their lives. And don't give up because of failure, but keep trying, and you will successful in your endeavors. Also, be careful of people in your life, and try to discern whether they are providing accurate information and advice for the welfare of all for their own welfare. Or are they offering a sweet aroma of equipment or a foul odor of defeat? Just remember that sometimes adversity can lead you to a better place and confusion if you need it held on with faith in God and gratitude. So don't let beneficence doubt, destroyedness stop you from going for things of higher value. Thank you.
Thank you, more God. Next.
Go on with it. Readings. My name is Roy Hall. I live at fifty-one, fifty-two Mountain View Park, Lake. And first of all, I'm here as a man of God, not here to speak evil against anybody, or... And I pray that this is what I'm gonna say is not towards anybody personally, but I've noticed some things, and I'll make some notes, try to stay on track. But I pray that God bless y'all, that he make his face shine upon y'all and give you peace. First thing I'd like to address is the recent, in the recent weeks, the false narrative in the times of the accusations of unwanted physical contact. So here we are. My understanding, I know the investigation's public now, so it's okay if you talk about it, obviously in the news. So now it's gone from what it was and what the result of the investigation, which there were no findings. The investigation was settled. My understanding, the GMA instructor said that everybody should be treated equally, because nothing was found. So that ain't happening. People are not being treated equally. This is not a complaint in the investigator's report. Second, there's been accusations that a certain council member was responsible for the eight thousand dollars for the investigations, when the fact is the complainant has caused the expense. When someone makes an accusation to the public, that automatically triggers an investigation. That person is triggering that investigation, is costing that money. Especially when the person is not to be found guilty of anything or running wrongdoing that the people in these investigations. So, when a person makes a cause investigation, no wrongdoing is found, and in fact, the person who has started the process has caused this expense. Now, I'm not saying that if it's employee of the city, now, the employees of the city and the public are treated differently. There's, that's true, and that was brought up in the GMA thing. And so, I think there should probably be some kind of agreement that if someone brings a frivolous accusation, it turns out that there's no evidence, preponderance of evidence, that nobody's been convicted or accused, or anything's been found wrongdoing, then maybe that money should be charged back to the person that caused the investigation. That's just my personal opinion about that. That's the second thing I want to talk about. The third thing, I want to talk about the audit, if I may. We just heard the presentation, which I thought was pretty well-done. Afterwards, I spoke to the, uh, the Mr. Auditor. And as my suspicions were come to be true, there is a line in the Georgia State Constitution that forbids public funds from going to a nonprofit. And I think Mr. Joey has confirmed that to be a line in the Georgia State Constitution. So I understand that a resolution was passed back in twenty-twenty or whatever. But why would you pass a resolution to give public funds when clearly in this Georgia State Constitution prohibits that from happening? Why would you pass something to break the Constitution and do this? Secondly, I asked him about, because he never talked about the funds in the audit. Where is this money coming from? Which account is this money coming from? He told me that had that money showed up in the audit, in the bookkeeping, in the finances, that he would've flagged it and asked about it. So I asked him, where did that money come from? Where does it come from? Which account? He couldn't tell me. He said he didn't know. That, to me, makes my flag go up. That means the money is being moved around. And then I asked him, I said, well, is there an account that the city manager or someone could have access to, for expenditures or whatever, without being accounted for? And he said, absolutely not. Every dollar that comes into the city for, as public funds, has to be accounted for. Every dollar. That means if money goes to this, to any nonprofit, and I'm not targeting these people. I'm for historical societies. I hope they do, they do a great thing. I'm just saying, I'm stating the law, as an owner of a nonprofit myself, that this goes against the Georgia State Constitution to use public funds to go to a nonprofit. Period. End of story. So that tells me that previous council members, possibly even possibly previous mayor, has been involved in breaking or encouraging.
That's enough, Roy.
The Georgia State Constitution.
That's enough, Roy.
If anybody can go online and read the Constitution, I pulled it up. Anybody's welcome to do that. It is in the Constitution. And that's really pretty much all I have to say. I would like to know personally, as a concerned citizen, how come that money that's gone to this nonprofit has not showed up in the audit? That money is supposed to be accounted for.
Mr. Mayor, may I address that?
Motion.
I make a motion to be able to address that. He's making an accusation that is false. I need to address that.
It is, and it actually is.
The city council paid no monies to that organization in twenty-twenty-two. That's why it's not on the audit. Period.
That's not what I'm.
Well, that's the truth. So before you come up with. I spoke to, I spoke to you. The citizens of our comments.
Do not debate it.
Point of order. Point of order.
You're out of order.
I make a motion. I make a motion against the mayor for my out of order. So can somebody second that?
I'll second that.
Can we vote on that?
Yeah.
Can we vote on that?
Can we?
No. Joey? I'm appealing his objection to me for being out of order.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. This, that, oh, yeah. Here's what I recommend. The short answer to your question is yes, but at this point in the agenda, we're at public comment. The gentleman has made some fairly serious accusations. I also request the opportunity to address, but the gentleman deserves his opportunity, I believe, at this point in your agenda, to finish his comments. And then, Mr. Mayor, because of the seriousness of the accusations, I do request that you allow some statement to be made immediately following these kinds of comments.
That's what I thought.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Roy.
Okay.
I would like to go next. Can I go next?
I think Chip's got something to say first.
My apologies for my heated state of mind right now. I find it very offensive when the people of this community want to go simply on hearsay of what is happening. Sir, it is hearsay, because the fact of the matter is that the society that you're talking about, the nonprofit that you're talking about, is the Historical Society, which has received zero-dollar funds for twenty-twenty-two. Zero. That's why it's not in.
See, I'm not talking about twenty-twenty-two. I'm talking about in the past.
You asked about the audit, which was for twenty-twenty-two. He had no answer for you for twenty-twenty-two, because there was none there.
I stand corrected for twenty-twenty-two.
Then please make sure that before you bring in such serious accusations.
I stand corrected.
Thank you.
For twenty-twenty-two. But would you agree that is a past money has gone?
I disagree. However, I would also agree that your information that you've gotten.
Previous mayor.
The information that you have received about what's legal and is not legal is incorrect. And I will rely on Joey later to inform you on what the law is. Nope, certainly don't. Trust me.
Can I get back to citizens' comments now? Are you two at my meeting?
Sir, it's not your meeting. It's our meeting, and I'm done with my statements.
I'm in charge. This meeting is my meeting. The mayor is presiding everywhere. The board of the charters, the mayor presides over meetings. It's my meeting. I lead the meeting. That's what the charter says. And we put, we'll throw the charter out and throw it all out. I mean, I don't think that's what we want to do.
Honey, is your one there? May I speak?
I'm doing this, citizen. I'll hold mine.
May she speak, please. Let her speak.
My name is June Vincent. I live at forty-seven nineteen O'Connellia Highway. I have been a member of the Historical Society for a long time. For the last two years, I have been the treasurer. And if, I don't know if the.
Address us, please.
But I will tell you this. The city has not given us any money. I don't know where that came from, but I was the treasurer. I took in every penny that was brought in and put in the bank.
God bless you.
And I have books, which Chip's daughter now has, because she's the new treasurer, every penny. And we quibbled over three cents at our last executive meeting, because I missed three cents out of a treasury box. That's how honest I kept the books. And I would like the rumors to stop. And I have some other comments that I'll make at the end of the meeting about some other things. But when you accuse somebody of dishonesty.
No, 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 no. Talk to us. Don't debate it. Talk to us.
You know, I, I would stake my mouth on my reputation. I've never even had a speeding ticket. I mean, I, I have no reason to hide funds.
Thank you.
And I, I don't mean to sound mean, but I don't like, and I like your haircut, by the way.
Thank you. Thank you, June. Appreciate that. Okay, now to your turn. That's Amanda Brown at fifty-six sixty-seven Judy Ball Road.
There you go.
Go direct.
Okay. I was thinking today of what I would say. I was thinking as a woman, as the owner of a local business, was it even wise to speak up? You might ask why. Why would I not stand up to speak? That can be summed up in one word: intimidation. Intimidation that leads to retaliation. I know of other businesses in town that have been targeted. Targeted if they disagree with their current mayor or any of his known associates. You've watched at meetings, you may have even read in the Gainesville Times. Our local residents, property owners, and even our councilwoman have been singled out and targeted. So why take the chance? Because I've taught my children, you never allow someone to bully you. I've been a resident of Lula since nineteen ninety-three. I started my first successful business here in two thousand. This is my home. This is where I work, and this is where I have raised my five children. My granddaughter even attends Lula Elementary. Having said all that, I have never been more disappointed in our mayor than I am right now. Your representation of our home has been tarnished in a way that will take years to erase. In the history of Lula, we have never had a forty-five-page investigation. We have never had sexual harassment reported. And we have never been put in the Gainesville Times for so many disconcerting stories. You may be saying, this is all opinion. Well, let me leave you with a direct quote from our mayor, Thomas, as reported by the Gainesville Times. This was at the sexual harassment training at the expense of taxpayers. Thomas took on a more trivial tone when posed with the hypothetical scenario of a female poll worker bringing a male a bouquet of flowers on a regular basis, to which the mayor responded, "If she's good-looking, yeah. If she's ugly, oh, no." Does this sound like a man who took the situation of training for sexual harassment seriously? Sounds to me like a man who doesn't take governing our town very serious at all. Thank you.
Amanda, the mayor.
Robert Grizzle, six-four hundred, Airway.
That's right. Thank you, councilors, and everyone for being here. In fact, she said all the comments tonight. If you don't put some of the words out of my mouth, we, the people, we, the people, the citizens of Lula, we, leader of, in the Lula city leaders, county politics, state of Georgia, the United States of America. We don't live in Moscow. I was saying this back in July of last year. I'd like to commend our city manager on the work that he did leading to that forty-five-page investigation, because I asked that thing taken serious, and I felt that it was. The results of it, I don't talk, by the administration's taking very serious. They wield a big broom and a large robe swept up under it. It's going for my investigation, and for the second investigation of sexual harassment. While we on that, I would like to point out something that was pointed out in July of twenty-twenty-two before this allegation, which, by the way, is on video, of sexual allegations against the female deployed. A big concern of ours at that same city council person, and he still obtains them to this day, pictures of our two granddaughters, at the time, eleven-years-old, four-years-old, in bathing suits. And he's taking pictures of them beside our house on Belton Bridge Road. And still obtains those pictures. And now he's got allegations of sexual abuse. And they're swept under the road, too. Also, would like to make another comment, two comments now that we throw out the comments. We have a right to file a formal complaint here in the city of Lula without persecution. As somebody else has just pointed out, maybe they should be charged with frivolous losses. It's the statute of every city, oh, we didn't find any wrongdoing. But then they try to make it right. Generally, that's the way it goes. They make it right. And they do the right thing. Now, again, we don't live in Moscow. It's, in other words, going on those comments, keep your mouth shut, you take the bullying, you don't speak up, and you let it be. Well, we, the people of Lula, are not gonna let it be. I know the citizens are behind us all the way on all of this. I'd also like to report at this time, most people probably read that newspaper report that I had my picture in the paper on, and thought that it was from an interview with me. It wasn't. Anybody's welcome to ask. And Brian, he's here. He didn't interview me for that report, or that article, rather. It was done from the report. It wasn't done from an interview with me. I did speak with Brian after the report had already, or article had already been written. It wasn't done by talking to me. But everything gets swept under the rug. And it's time for it to stop. It is time for it to stop. And to even make a comment, we should keep our mouths shut for fear of persecution. Listen to that "let it ring" part of your ears. Let it ring real hard that what was said here tonight by citizens that we should keep it shut. Now, keep it in mind, it's easy to come to your own conclusion on any allegation. But you know what? And I have no good, hey, from the person. I asked the question, did you read the investigation report? The answer was no. I don't need to read it. Well, maybe you should read it. I think every citizen in the city of Lula, and I'm the big, my dangest to do it, to get them a copy of it. They don't have to come here and get it. I'll print it, and I'll do it myself. And another thing, this Historical Society, why is it still being brought up the way it is? I think with settled that they would get the used depot. Am I correct? I think they should have a hundred-year lease at a dollar a year. And I'll pay that hundred dollars right now, so it can be put to bed. And I'll pay that hundred dollars right now, so it can be put to bed. I'd ask for that to be voted on, that it be approved. Here's the money. I'll put my money where my mouth is. I'll pay for the Historical Society, what they agreed on, what was agreed on here for the next hundred years. Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody else? That's all I got? All right, do you want to... This is clarification.
Just as a matter of legal issues, first of all, the law mandates investigations in certain situations. In fact, the city policy mandates investigations in certain situations. And if those investigations are not permitted, the law deems that retaliation. So, as y'all learned in the training, when investigations are made, particularly as it relates to public employees, that's a cost of doing business. And I would strongly discourage every way I can to tell council, you cannot disallow an investigation, and you cannot even consider punishing a person who makes a complaint that the law permits without going through the investigation. So that's just a cost of being in government. The gratuities clause that was referenced and the contention that any payment to any nonprofit is always illegal is just not the law. Everybody can have their opinion about the law, but there's case law that describes it. When council has approved any funding for any Historical Society activity in the past, you have resolutions, and council, before authorizing that expenditure, would specifically find that the Historical Society provides substantial benefits to the health and welfare of the city and city residents by conducting and holding festivals and activities that increase tourism and business activity within the city, which increases city revenue. Or words to that effect. You will find that local governments provide space for what would otherwise be exclusively nonprofits in exchange for that nonprofit providing substantial benefits to the local government. I was looking on my phone, not because it wasn't interesting, but I was trying to pull up a memorandum that I have provided to the city regarding this issue as it relates to gratuities. And I just mentioned that now, because those words are in the Georgia Constitution. I provided those to you, but there are circumstances under which a local government can provide for a nonprofit as long as the government receives those substantial benefits.
Thank you, June. Okay, on with the other things. To mention the last meeting, has everybody read their copy of them? Did anybody want to add something? All right, I have my show for the top. Push that the deep end, we've got them in. Give me a second.
Sure.
I'll send them around to you. All effects are out.
Aye.
All place said no. This is both meetings, by the way. You see them at eight AM, they're working. Thank you. Okay, yard of the month, the citizens. It's January, it's not pretty, it's not, it's a mayor's duty, I'm like that. It doesn't yard of the month anymore. District one, it's Johnny Lee and Tammy Boone in Secret Fifty-Two Street. District two, Michelle and Tracy Brooks, fifty-three sixty-four, Morgan Avenue Drive. District three, Walter Rucker, six-one seventy-seven, Chatham Street. District four, Fabia Seller, fifty-one fifty-eight, Mountain Park Way. District five, Adrian Davis, one-fourth Brookside Place. Okay, Dennis.
All right, a little levity. The news is, while we get here about another hour, we'll all have to find him. I'm just kidding. So we are twenty-six weeks, actually twenty-seven weeks into the fiscal year from when this P and L statement was last pulled, which would suggest that we should have forty-eight percent of the net revenue remaining. You're going to hear us talk about two of our funds, what we call operational, the general fund and the utility fund. So bear in mind, where it should be at about forty-eight percent remaining on revenue, we actually are fifty-two percent percentage in revenue. We've made some adjustments, council knows, because of the American Rescue Act, which is five-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand dollars. We don't want to distort that number. So we are on track where we should be. Third and the fourth quarter, which we've just entered in the third quarter, are generating a vast amount of dollars. Matter of fact, a lot of local governments that have a fiscal year that runs from July one through June thirtieth find the first two quarters rather tough, mainly because they're dependent on property taxes. Ironically, we're not dependent on property taxes, and we skated by the first two quarters as we should. That being said, I would make the same remark. It's not how much you bring in, it's how much you spend in your own household. So we should be accommodating as well. Year-to-date, right now, where we should be, again, at about fifty-one percent of the budget left, we're at forty-eight percent in expenditures, which leaves us with a positive cash flow of thirty-three thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty dollars. I want anybody to go spend on that, unfortunately. With the third and fourth quarter comes expenses that we generate in the quarters. In the utility fund, good news is, again, where we ought to be at about forty-eight percent remaining, we actually, we made some adjustments. Anybody wants to make a remark? We forecast for tax funds, one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars this year. Watch how this can get distorted. We've collected three-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand. So that number would distort the revenue. And that money actually goes in a separate account, which I'm going to pull up in just a second. So you can see where you left that number in. What we do is, we back out that number. We put only in the number of one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. That leaves us with revenue of six-hundred-and-two-thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-four. I'll always stop right here and talk about the important thing, whereas tax fees don't pay operations. That's, those are set aside. Thank goodness the council has had the wise decision to set that money aside so it doesn't bite us in the hind end later on when we have to make capital improvements. So we pay a lot of attention to the water and sewer revenue. And right now, we're fine as year-to-date. But I'll remind everybody that these are the winter months of those numbers fall off. One of the other things I'd come along and point out, but let's talk about the expenditure again. And we've had some expenditure. We made an adjustment because we made some payments on sewer line I. You'll hear about that in just a second. If we ever stop raining, we might get it done. But anyway, when we balance that out, we're at about forty-eight percent remaining of the budget for expenditures, which, flipped over to the wrong page, leaves us positive cash flow of about ninety-eight thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-three dollars. So, as we sit here today, we have eleven funds, the bank funds. And as you can see, that activity takes place, for the most part, in the operational fund. They make capital improvements regularly. An example is, you'll hear me talk a little bit more about sewer line I, which is too far. If it'll ever stop raining, we're putting in another well with the hope that it's successful. All the intricate details of that well could cost as much as three-hundred thousand. The city just recently acquired, finished complete, acquiring property on Carter Alley, and you'll hear more about that again. But hats off, financially, bank balances remain constant, as we spoke about in the last meeting. And I will entertain any questions from the council.
I've got a couple.
Sure.
General funds received year-to-date.
So if you, you want with numbers in with five-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand? Or do you want without?
No.
Seven-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand, one-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars.
Expenses?
Expenses on that, not adjusted, seven-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars, under twenty-four cents.
I understand a little better.
Yep.
Money and money, yeah.
You want the utility fund?
Yeah. Okay, go here.
Yep. Six-hundred-and-two-thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars. You want, not adjusted, because we had those capital expenses in there. If it's adjusted, it's five-hundred-and-three thousand, three-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars.
But this is a big city, by the way.
Yep.
Okay. You guys got any questions? Morrison? Morrison, current conditions?
So, current conditions, good news, we talked about last week, how the sewer, I mean, how the freeze back Christmas impacted the city. Hats off to council for dealing with that. Water system, we've had now a total of nine requests, rebellion requests for credits. We went to the committee for recommendation on that, and the committee came back. Do y'all want to address this? Joe, do you want to address it?
Yeah, go ahead.
Here, I can give you the copy of it. All right, it was one through four, as I had sent y'all.
What did you say it was there? Credit?
This is for the credit, our request for water usage. And the committee proposed this. Credit has been requested by a customer early in the end of this month. Credit can only be used for December building. Credit can only be offered for those that have ten percent increase in water usage for December. Any leak obviously has to be fully repaired. If customers satisfy all these requirements, the credit's going to be twenty dollars.
And that's what the committee recommended doing? Yes. Any words, Joe, you want to do about this? All perfect, this recommendation, say aye.
You'd have to have the first and the second, just for the player.
Committee doesn't count?
Yeah. Okay, yeah.
I'll make a motion. Should I do it?
I motion, I like Chip Horace, I like Marcus Smith, to accept these credits for water usage. All perfect, aye.
Aye.
All votes, a no. Treasury. Twenty dollars. So on items.
Unbeknownst to the audience, not everybody may know, we had some battleism that we suspect took place on the cannon line tank. Probably New Year's Eve or New Year's Day, where somebody shot a hole in the cannon line tank. It's not as easy as to fix as one might think. Anyway, it's a glass line tank, and it's especially to make that repair. We were fortunate enough, it's not like, there's companies that work throughout the southeast that do that. So we were fortunate enough to get a crew in here last Thursday to make those repairs to the tank. That came at a cost, I remind the council, of sixty-six hundred dollars. And so the question is, was that budget? Well, we didn't foresee that, so I think we're okay on line items. We'll adjust that through the year, but I ask you just to keep that in back of your mind, that that's the type of event that we're fortunate, that we have some flexibility with the budget. Waste water treatment issues, we did experience some problems in the deep freeze that we had, where it went down to three degrees, wasn't that fun? Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, I reminded council, we got those repairs taken care of. Haven't seen all the invoices on it, but we were lucky to even get prepared for this to come out. We continue to struggle with the money. We just got some, what we call a CRT report today and about the makeup of our waste systems. I don't want to put anybody to sleep, but at the end of the day, we're talking about micwork, and so... Anybody wants to talk to me about that after the meeting, I can probably put you to sleep. But that's been a challenge, not related to the coal side of it. Council is considering a proposed tax fees increases, where we looked at a study that was done a couple of years ago. And so what is that? We call TCRs, which is transmission capacity and reserve capacity. And that's for both water and sewers, so you understand it. So when, as you heard me mention in the financial report, we have dollars that we subside correctly, so... So when improvements have to be made in the system, or maintenance has to be done in the system, council has that option of approving those. So, I mentioned last week in kind of a good example, it doesn't matter what it cost us yesterday to be in, build, or build infrastructure. What matters is what it costs us tomorrow. An example is, twelve years ago, we built almost a new waste treatment plant. Obviously, it's not new, it's twelve years old. But twelve years ago, and that was at a cost of over twelve million dollars. And we were lucky, we got a big grant that helped offset that cost. To replace that today would be almost twenty-four million dollars. So you'll see a lot of communities right now, certainly north of here, because their permit requirements for having them, making them upgrade plants, that they're experiencing, wide-eyed experience where they're having to realize the cost of capital improvements, not only in this day and time, where things have gotten rather expensive, as you've experienced at home, but same is true for us. So in our case, when we look at the TCRs, or for the common name, a lot of people call them tax fees, the council is considering, what's the cost to replace that infrastructure tomorrow and continue to make improvements? And you only recently saw our friends at City Flower Branch had proposed a big addition, twenty-seven million dollars, only to have the bids come in at fifty-three million dollars. So they're having to rethink their entire approach to that. And I'm not going to tell you that wouldn't happen here. I'm going to tell you with the wise judgment of the council recognizing cost continues decrease, you don't wait until you get slapped in the face with it the next day. So in the month of February, Joey, if I can find my notes. On February, if I put on my glasses, thirteenth and twentieth, right, Joey? We're going to have two public hearings
Yes.
on the increases that are being proposed by the city council for the TCRs or tax fees. Go ahead.
Can we say now what those proposals are?
I've got the numbers.
I've got the numbers. The word tax fee proposed to go from eight-hundred to fifteen-hundred? And the sewer tax fee proposed from five-hundred to seven-hundred?
That's correct.
This is newest, new presidential contribution. That's what the proposal is on base.
That's based on, it's what we know today.
Right.
The only other thing I have, and I mentioned with council, we have a, they're going to be attended tomorrow as well, is we have a sewer wastewater form tomorrow that'll be participated by City of Gainesville, City of Flower Branch, and the City of Lula, regards to future needs. And fortunately, we've done our homework on that, so y'all have heard that. We know what our future needs are. We know when, hopefully, we can understand when the triggers will come with the continuing program. That's all I've got.
Those three cities involved, is that because they've gone...
It's all because, yeah, they have permits, the discharge is... Well, it's primarily, Mr. Mayor, just for your understanding, that's the Chamber of Commerce is putting that on. It's more about economic development. So the City of Beaufort, the City of Coming, Forsyth County, and the City of Gwinnett County also have permits discharged into Lake Huron here as well. I didn't want you to think those were only...
Okay. Open the, the qualifying fees for this year's elections.
Last week, the discussion was a hundred dollars, which is what it was last year.
Do you want to do more discussion on the downwind? Qualifying, do you want to set the qualifying days?
We can, because we would, tangent, I need to communicate with, with all of them. Hall County, and they're going to ask that. Staff is requesting that it be the Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday of the week of qualifying, which I believe is August the twenty-fifth.
Okay, so we're going, we're going to set the hundred-dollar qualifying date. I'll enter in the book before that.
I'll make a motion to do the hundred-dollar qualifying.
I'll make a motion to do the hundred dollar fall time.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Dave Shopp, this segment Chip Horse, a fall time fee for this year's election, a hundred dollars. This is for three council states, districts, one, four, and five. Any more discussion? All members say aye?
Aye.
All folks say no? Okay. It's then to the public sector. Public sector meeting is conceding, I think we're going to go to this, right? A parking board is for downtown, downtown game. Not one wish you had a parking board down there. A parking board for downtown and, uh.
Yes.
Appreciate it, yes. And the.
This isn't just downtown, though, is it? And that.
Just, just remember, we were discussing where we had some issues regarding financial.
I'm sorry.
Right.
I'm sorry.
Main area, Mayor, where I'm working on is the, uh, whatever tolling policy, I just wanted to make sure I give y'all a number of options for that, before you decide to include what you want to include as a tolling policy within a parking.
And have we come on to the street, for street resource?
Uh, they still have, I met with the engineer today, and if it'll ever stop raining, they could probably nail down all the linear lines.
Well, I did get an email from, uh, Francis Banks this week.
Right.
She mentioned it through the floor session last week, but she sent me an email this week. I would like to ask the current mayor, Joe Tompkins, to step down from this position. Oh, I'm sorry, wrong email. Over, over the years, in the past, Mayor, I may request to have a way on sort of pay. I've received numerous reasons, received numerous reasons in the past, I want to again ask the city to consider paying all the way on sort of, this rock, rock, rock road at this time. We now have more traffic on the street, including the high limit to the transportation, mail person, Uchester, Amazon, City of Louisville routes throughout the day, tractors ten in the fields, and also from people living around the circle. I also have a home business and have people coming to my home. I believe in the long run, it would save the city money, it, as it would be less upkeep, greater replacement of rocking roads, which means maintain property. Now, the, uh, street committee has heard, heard this question, they haven't, they heard it last week at the court session, and that's a consideration. So, we, we still have Hill, Mark, and Sam, which one, they've. Have we come up with any kind of list at all of these?
We have a list that y'all, remember y'all prioritize, and that's where we're taking the numbers from.
And you have sort of not on that list, is that correct?
Uh, not for continuation of research.
Many new usage?
That was, while we, when we addressed that issue, uh, Lou, Lou Allen Circle along with the others was considered. And then we gave you information the other day about after, uh, Ms. Banks made her request of the cost, we can revisit that, if the committee wants to get numbers.
The list rose in the city. It's broken down, it's trapped vine, paddle load, uh, two years ago, and it lasts for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, and it last resurfaced in the regular condition, from one to ten, ten being good, one being bad, and the lot surface cost way, way down to one on the traffic load and up to seven on the condition of the road, so that's, that's why it's not on the list. Very, very little use.
May I ask a clarifying question, Mr. Mayor? Uh, this is the road that we're talking about that, uh, last meeting, we had someone come up and speak. And then I think we briefly spoke about that, uh, later in the week, last week. Um, I just want to make sure that is.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, residential building apartments.
So, we had taken that, we recommended that go back to committee, and we haven't had the opportunity for the committee to meet, if you remember.
That's what I thought. Putting in the meeting. Try to schedule a meeting sometime.
Amen.
Wish I was, right? Wish it happened all day, now my husband, uh.
Yes, sir.
Okay, parts of the committee, still got to meet about that one, too, don't we?
Uh, we had, if you remember, we talked, y'all brought that up after the finance committee, um, previous week, that's why I put that on the agenda.
So, still going to go?
Up to y'all. We still haven't met with, as far as repo usage, remember, we were going to revisit that, and you brought up, uh, or I think Gene might have brought up, Louisville ladies and, uh, historical society, that's the last meeting.
Okay, the comp, comp plan up late, uh, lane usage, the street committee meets Thursday, the night, Thursday, the nineteenth, six o'clock, right here.
Yeah, right here.
Okay, the, uh, city appointments. Yeah. I don't know. I'm looking at suggestions about this. Anybody has? Has a recommendation for Mayor Rockham? I'd like to point to these. That's Garn, anybody's got?
Is, is that motion?
It's motion.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Parker Smith, segment Chip Horse, to make the D. Shopp, Mayor Rockham. Any more discussion on it? All members say aye?
Aye.
All folks say no? I think you still got it. Okay, how about the city attorney? Any discussion about that? I'll, I'll submit, we keep the same one.
I made that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Gene Brammitt, segment D. Shopp, keep Tanyi as city attorney. All members say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All folks say no? City clerk? Tanyi?
I'm making a motion to state to the clerk.
I'll say.
Motion made by Gene Brammitt, segment D. Shopp, keep Tanyi as city clerk. All members say aye?
Aye.
All folks say no? City judge, Hammond Law. I, I submit we keep him. Just want to change.
I don't have a motion, but I do have a question about that with the city judge. Um, I was reading in, um, the, the list of ordinances that I had on the thumb drive that our city judge or magistrate is one that was, uh, I guess, given to us by Hall County? And, and we pay Hall County for the use of that judge, or is that an old ordinance?
That's an old ordinance, the city council, uh, I believe, Joey, might have been seven years ago, uh, actually appointed Hammond Law to that position and has renewed contract with him, wasn't that the last action you told?
That was, it may have been that council member, of course, got into the animal control ordinance because I believe on animal control, since Hall County does that for us, we may have in that particular agreement and ordinance that they go on into, uh, Hall County magistrate court, and so we put in that language that they address that and act as our municipal court for that limited purpose. Otherwise, all ordinance violations come to our municipal court.
Thank you for clarification.
Yes.
So, do you hear a motion by city judge?
I'll make a motion that we keep Hammond Law.
Motion made by D. Shopp, let's keep Hammond Law, city judge, I'll give a second.
Second.
Second, Garn Smith, all members say aye?
Aye.
All folks say no? City manager?
I'll make a motion that we keep Dennis.
Second.
Most of the D. Shopp, for Denise Bergen, city manager, segment Chip Horse, all members say aye?
Aye.
All folks say no? I smell Dennis.
I was going to say that we know a good one, but then I could have said the same thing about the attorney.
I wasn't going to go there.
No, I know you weren't.
You get your stretch of zone amendments up yet?
So, remember. Sorry.
You got the list right there?
I didn't think you had one, good.
Okay. I think we still got a vote on this, it's for residential zoning amendments. And we've been through this, and been through this, and been through this, remember this? I will use that motion about this ordinance? Somebody say you want it, you want it up, come on in. If I want to accept it, then I won't accept it.
I have a motion to accept it.
Motion made by Gene Brammitt to accept the resident, the adoption of residential zone amendments, I'll give a second.
Is this one?
This is.
I don't have a copy in front of me, I just want to make sure that what I think I'm putting wrong is what I'm putting wrong.
This is the one that y'all, y'all approved the last time, but there were some items that were added that we weren't sure y'all had seen before.
I just wanted to make sure, I didn't want to.
So, we asked y'all to make sure that you go ahead and approve that, but put it on for another vote to make sure that you were comfortable, because there was so much there, that what was added, was presented that night, was what you want.
So, this one, if this passes tonight, this would be the second passing. Correct. To be done. And, um, I, I, I don't know if everyone's had that opportunity, I know that, uh, when we did pass the first one, there was, during that period of time for, uh, potential changes, uh, if anyone, uh, wanted to so make those. So, I just was curious if anyone on council had an opportunity to, uh, look at that one more time and verify if we needed to, uh, make any changes.
Uh, may I ask a clarifying question, either to Joey or to Dennis? There's a lot of information in there. I have reviewed, uh, the document, um, but a lot of it just made my eyes glaze over, I'm just going to be honest with you, there's a lot of information there. Should myself or someone else on council, three, four months from now, look at something and make, you know, make a scratcher head, can, can we bring up for a vote to make an amendment on the current, um.
Amendment, amend the amendment, yeah.
Amendment, yeah, amend the amendment, yeah. So, uh.
Go ahead, I'd love it, you go right ahead.
Yes.
So, and let me just say, for everybody in the audience, we had two public hearings on this, and you're correct. There's a lot of information on there that we revisited at the council's direction, uh, changes to the amount of density. And if you remember, specifically dealing with residential. Uh, Joey, uh, correctly identified some changes in state law that have been added as far as procedurally, just in a nutshell. Uh, which ironically, we were following some of those already. So, yes, there was a lot of significant changes, remember lot sizes and the amount of density, all those things were considered.
Considering, uh, the clarification, I'd like to second that motion.
Before doing anything else, I have a motion made by Gene Brammitt and segment Chip Horse to accept this amendments to zoning orders. I have a question myself first, Joey, on this copy here, everything in red, is that new order?
Right, and I said that.
I want to make sure. I want to make sure that wasn't, with deletions, because part of the lot.
I would just try to distinguish.
So, so the copy that Joe has is the corrections that were presented?
It's got additions, it's got deletion from the additions. Oh, that might be, I want to make sure I have the right one here. So, all in favor of accepting this ordinance as amended, say aye?
Aye.
All folks, as opposed, say no? We have the old ordinance amended. All of you on those same, Tanyi, right there?
Joey, I had one question on that amendment, does that take place thirty days, is that the way that works? On that zoning amendment, is that effective?
It's now.
It's not, it's effective now?
Right, okay, so, 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 y'all tell me, do.
That means our board appointment is now ridiculous.
Right, yes.
Automatic.
Yes.
We're building again, folks, we're building houses, we're building. Okay. Okay, uh, planning commission meets the first Thursday of February, which is only the second, if my calendar says right.
That's just for this month, yes, you know, they do it last month before.
It's just a special time, a deck change on this. Okay, number thirteen, human resources, will discuss the budget of positions. And, uh, what those budget positions are, is an assistant city manager and a downtown, uh, manager. Now, we have some discuss, we have some recommendations from the committee. Here is what's due, to, uh, hire an assistant manager for a salary of, what do you remember about this? We said eighty-five thousand, two eighty-six, sixty-five, twenty-one dollar an hour for the city?
I think that was top pay, that was not start pay.
Okay, that was start, okay.
That was not start pay, that, that was the cap, that was the cap pay.
I don't know, did we ever get it? I knew, the one, the one we have, the assistant manager, has the old bill and sent last year, we're going to get the same present, same ad for the same dollar range this year, or how it will have to happen this year?
I'll just remind y'all, y'all had brought it, the opportunity of a new dollar amount, as well as a, uh, opportunity, I think, Joey, you and I talked about it, where they might have moving expenses that would pay a premium that could be part of that first year.
Right, right. Got back to.
But you never arrived at the dollar amount.
So, we need, we need to do that before we can advertise the job. Oh, first of all, do we have to approve the job itself?
The job's already been approved.
It's like it's been budgeted up.
It's been budgeted, it was in my. Um, I'd like to speak on this, because there's a lot of stuff going around that I've been reading. Uh, this, this was approved actually prior to us being elected on the council. This was put into this year's budget, this is not going to increase your taxes, we've already wrote back your taxes. It's increased, this is not going to cause you to pay taxes. Uh, this is jobs that are needed to help our city run smoothly, so that we're not wearing down the employees that we have now. They are vital parts to our community, these employees, and we need to treat them as such. And I, I'm for these positions. I did a little research, um, and I'd like to share some of the research that I have done, so that you know. And I spoke on some of this last meeting, um, where I called the city of Commerce. They have roughly seventy-five hundred, and I know that's more than what we have. This is the positions, the higher positions that they have there. They have a city manager, a city clerk, they have two positions that would not qualify for us, because they have electric and gas. They have a public work director, a wastewater manager, a water sewer director, a human resource director, a finance director, a magistrate director, planning and zoning director, a building inspector. They are now hiring and adding a new position, which is assistant manager. City of a bald one, they're a little more in our bald park on, um. City of Baldwin, they're a little more in our ballpark on the number of people, they have thirty-seven, forty-two. They have a city manager, a city clerk, they have two positions that won't qualify for our police. They have a public works director, a finance director, an administrative assistant to the manager. City of Dawsonville, now they have a lot more stuff downtown than we would, but they're at thirty-five thousand. They have four departments, which have their own buildings, which they probably need, we don't need that. But they have an administration department, a planning and zoning department, public works department, utilities. Within this, they have a city manager, a city clerk, an administrative assistant to the city clerk, a finance director with administrative assistant to the finance director. The city manager uses both of these assistants. They have a planning and zoning director, downtown development director, public works director, utility operator manager. City of La Lounia, twenty-seven hundred people. City manager, city clerk, public works directors, street superintendent, water superintendent, distribution superintendent, water plant supervisor, futilities maintenance superintendent. Dennis, what do we have here? We have you and Tangi and Hoyt, we have three. Three. We are at three thousand. Our people are overworked, overworked. We're not charging you city taxes. It's already budgeted. This money is here, we're just not spending it because we have failed to fill the position. We have, this is on us. I just wanna put that out there, I want you to know that we have thought hard about this. But the city cannot run smooth if we're not employed accurately for what we have. We service area outside of the city of Lula. We service on the other side of three sixty-five, that is not in our city district. We have several areas outside of the city of Lula, so three thousand people does not accurately cover our numbers with some of the services that we have. And I just wanna make sure that everyone of you are aware of this, because a lot of people, there's just a lot of stuff going on, a lot of talking, and I want you to be clear on what we're doing. We're not trying to pull the wool over your eyes, we're not trying to just blow money up here. We're trying to give our employees adequate help, so that they can do their job properly, so that when you have issues, they can address your issues. And that's our job up here.
Mr. Mayor, may I speak as you're on that?
Sure.
So just, I did some research as well. I looked into, well, not, I'm not gonna count Gainesville, but Flyer Branch, Oakwood, Commerce, Alto, Baldwin, Cornelia, Clarksville, Cleveland, Delonaga, Dawsonville. And luckily with Dawsonville, I was able actually to speak with Mayor Easton this evening. And I've been in Georgia for eighteen years, and I learned something about Dawsonville that I did not know before today. I did not know that the four hundred area, what everybody considers to be Dawsonville, that is not Dawsonville. I didn't know that. I thought Dawsonville was a lot larger than what it is. According to the mayor, to date, three point four thousand residents is what they serve. Now, they do have more commerce than we have, but when I asked him about the commerce, he said that the commerce is a drop in the bucket for the revenue that they take in, and they actually take that money and put it aside for something else. For the most part, the city of Dawsonville is getting their revenue from the same sources that we are. They do not charge property taxes, they rely mostly on franchise fees, is that correct?
Correct.
Splosh funds and water and sewer, which is what we're doing. So to me, that was good news to know that we, one of the things that I ran on is, I'm gonna kick that can as far down the road as I can, because just like you guys, I'm a resident of the city of Lula. I don't wanna pay property taxes, it's one of the reasons why I moved here, I don't wanna pay property taxes. And I had this preconceived notion that, you know, maybe here in about five or ten years, we might have to. But after speaking with Mayor Easton, he's like, no, you don't. He said, you know, we've got more people, more commerce, we don't have property taxes, and they have a whole lot more employees in their city than what we do. Every city that I looked into that I just named off, all of them have a multitude more employees than what we have. So, again, to back up with Denise is saying, to bring on an assistant city manager and to bring on a part-time downtown manager is a small step towards making sure that we are eventually properly manned for this city to run. It is our job as the council to using our committees to make sure that we are making wise decisions with the revenue that we have. And it's also our job to bring it to the residents, so that you guys can see what we're doing with it and take your comments and see what you guys think about it. But ultimately, in the end, you guys, whether you did or you didn't, we were majority elected into these positions to run the city. It's my hope that myself, along with my fellow council members, can do right by you. So I just wanted to, you know, to let you guys know that asking for this, well, not asking, letting you guys know that we're bringing on this position, it's not a knee-jerk reaction, it's something that was planned before we got here, but it is a well-needed position.
I'd like to say something as well. My recommendation really is to send this back to the committee, just for a couple of reasons. I agree that we do need to fill at least the assistant city management position for sure. I think that both positions, we, I would love to see some more defined duties that would be included as part of the daily operations and also to be included in the advertisement. I would want to be able to see what we're going to list as the desired skills and experience. And I want to also make a separate statement, you know, my recommendation is to send it back to committee, so that we have another opportunity to really have this stuff ready to go, so that we all agree what the duties are. But I'd also, Chip, you made a very interesting, you know, comment there regarding, you know, your conversations with, I guess with Mayor Easton. I think it would be wise of us in the future to go through and benchmark our expenditures with some of these other cities, and I'm sure, I'm just guessing, and Dennis may know this, the GMA may provide us some assistance in gathering that information, just something that I think we should inquire about. I would love to benchmark, you know, what we're doing in comparison to the other cities, to find out where our differences are. And so we can compare apples to apples, and see if maybe, you know, we're doing something better than they are, and they're doing something better than we are in another area. So I think that that's very, very good, I'm glad you brought that up. But to finish my statement, I recommend this go back to committee and give us an opportunity again for all council to see exactly what we're planning to advertise.
Congress, you guys have something to say?
I'm listening.
Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
One second. Motion by the team, Brown, second of the first seat, to say this back to committee, a board discussion. All persons say aye.
Aye.
All folks say no. Of course, what y'all just did, you made it hard for us, because we got to schedule this committee, just to let y'all know we got to do this. We got the agenda, we're not there. Fairway. Okay. Yes, sir.
We had a whole council involved on this, discussing on this, so this is.
With me for advertising for committees now, so it wouldn't be a special call meeting, but certainly you could have full council if that's what you.
Why don't you have a council to be involved?
Oh, for a human resources, is that what you're asking? I didn't hear the whole thing, I'm sorry.
Which, that is a special call work session, or? Here, we got five, ten.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that motion, that we have the special meetings advertised with this.
Special work session, to be scheduled. Is that clear? Very good. Special work session, we're gonna go in and get, definitely have to schedule. Full-time mayor position is on the agenda, let's talk about it. You wanna get anything to say?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do. I'd like to start off by making sure that everybody, not only the council, but everybody out here, here or listening, knows that the consideration that I have given this is as logical as I can be taking any personal feelings that I might have out of this. Usually, I'm pretty good, you know, just speaking from the hip, but I've got some things written down, so if I'm looking down, I'm looking down at my notes. Just a moment ago, I listed all of the cities that I reached out to, and I spoke to either the city manager or the city clerk of each one of those cities. Of all of those cities that I listed, not one, not even Gainesville, has a full-time mayor. Forty-five thousand residents, the city of Gainesville does not have a full-time mayor. What all these cities do have that we don't have are a lot more employees. I'm not saying we need a lot more employees, but they don't have a full-time mayor. And I spoke to Mayor Easton about that, because Dawsonville, at one time, had a full-time mayor, and they had a full-time city manager. When that particular mayor, I don't know his name, I didn't think to ask, I heard of him. When that mayor was, I don't know if he was voted out, if he was on the second term, but when his term was over, and they elected a new mayor, and they elected him as a part-time mayor. And now that Mayor Easton is there, somebody asked him if he would consider being a full-time mayor. He said absolutely not, it doesn't work. It works the way that it is right now, it ain't broke, don't fix it. So, and this is all information that I just got this evening, speaking with him. This is something that I take very seriously, I don't take it lightly. I do not want to come across as someone who just makes emotional decisions. We all get emotional, y'all saw me get a little emotional over here. But this is not something that's emotional, I'm looking at what is in the best interest of the city. So, besides what I spoke to Mayor Easton about, there's also another issue with having a full-time mayor. As it was discussed and proposed by Mayor Thompson, or Tom, sorry. Having a full-time mayor that is doing the duties of a city employee presents a major conflict of interest. On one hand, he is the mayor, and Dennis reports to him as a subordinate. But in the duties of the assistant city manager, the mayor would then have to be subordinate to Dennis. That's a major conflict of interest, we can't have that. So, with those things in mind, I hope that everybody here listening, as well as my fellow council members, can understand why I would like to make a motion at this time to not consider having a full-time mayor.
You guys have a full time there?
I agree, that has been my thoughts through the discussion of this from the beginning, that there's a fine line there, and we are very close to crossing that fine line. And I feel like that it's gonna create a disruption in the daily functions more than it's want to help. And so I would second the motion.
You're very much better than Chip, more should not have a full-time mayor position. Second of the day shopping, equal conversation. All persons, motion, say aye.
Aye.
All folks say no. Okay, it solves that problem, right? Now we're gonna have a DRI. The Hilton Beach townhomes. This is a discussion about this, in case y'all haven't heard, it's sixty acres of land, they wanna build a red road, right across straight from Garnet's. They want to build two hundred and forty-four townhomes on. It's already owned, and it's owned, allows them to do that, but they got certain setbacks and other parts they got to meet. They have not brought the plan to us yet, it's just, thank you, it's positive by them. That's two hundred and forty-four townhomes on that, very good.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a quick question about that?
Sure.
I got an email from, I believe it was you, that we got a response from.
The city.
Hold on a second.
I got mine, maybe.
That response basically said that the traffic issues, I never saw the actual DRI for the development, I just saw a response, that one-page PDF.
So, we sent you the traffic study, that's what they're referring to, was the traffic study, and they, as you know, recommended that all recommendations noted in the traffic study be adhered to. So you have the traffic study, so nobody else commented what pulled that, it's that one.
Thank you, this person was interested, they're senior, he's coming on our DRI.
That actually was, the city of Jefferson, something like that.
But that's another, it's nothing we did, it's already owned for that, if they can make it work, it's gonna be hard for us to stop them.
And that's zone R three?
Zone R three.
It is.
Thirty hundred. Twenty, thirty, you're done. Hundred, twenty miles. Just be ready.
Be ready for a killer.
Bring it to them, I'm getting that, that work done, did you, if I don't bring it to them.
Probably, Mr. Hollins and I have talked about it, it does create challenges, as you can recognize. When you get a chance, if you haven't looked at it, the transportation study does recognize the increased flow of traffic. And yet, the law doesn't allow us to impose those improvements back on development, actually. There's the frustration in life, that you can't impose that on development. Specific improvements to that property should be recognized, which we will make every attempt to do. What I understand is they propose that the streets can be private internally. But again, we don't have a real document here.
Right.
Of conception.
We see it coming, well, y'all know it's coming, the traffic is probably gonna come.
I'll be moving, probably, remember that.
Yes, sir.
Where are you moving to, Larry?
I don't know. I'll be moving on that for a long minute.
He's gonna sell his, his car, his car, you know. Okay, that's the way it is now. They'll hide that way, okay. The Lula ladies, I'll be at the depot, and I think that's the way, maybe the twenty, the lunch and dinner, six-thirty, not six-five, that day. I'm doing the lunch. And so beside me, some fourth Monday, the month that the depot's seven o'clock, which is two weeks from yesterday.
Yeah. That great?
Yes, two weeks from yesterday.
Okay, now then, we got schedule, this committee. Okay, now then, we got scheduled these committee meetings, and we had some discussion about this, and I'm not sure what y'all gonna do about this. Do we want to set a certain time every month for committee meetings and council meetings as necessary? Or we're going to, uh, try to schedule the meeting, not have it happen, but having trouble scheduling it lately, mainly because it's not working. That's, that's the biggest issue.
Well, I think this should be scheduled a second day at a time, then they can plan, you know, to take off or whatever, they work with their employees. About how to get off, but, you know, they know that have a date, time to do it.
So you make an emotion on that?
Yes, I make a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion made by Gene, to set committee meetings on a monthly basis, or a preset schedule?
Preset schedule.
Preset schedule. To be here too, unless we have to go after two. Is that all meetings that day? For all committees? All committees? Meet that day? Well, that's, that's something we gotta decide too. We, we would call it all meetings, we would call it a special work session, anybody wouldn't, uh, or how, that's something we gotta decide, how to do this. We can't have a special work session every month, can we?
You could add a special, you could add a work session, is what I think one of the recommendations.
Yeah, that's. Is that sort of what we're saying then, instead of setting committees, meeting this back this, well, we said, so, a special work session every month, but everybody to be here.
I would second your motion based on, uh, Gene suggesting or motioning that we should have, uh, scheduled committees.
Scheduled committee meetings.
That's correct.
I suppose a special work session.
Yes.
I got a motion made by Gene, to schedule committee meetings separately. And it's set to one set schedule. Seconded by Chip Horst. Any word discussion on this?
I'll just remind the council, you have eighty scheduled meetings already. For nighttime, this would add another hundred and eight meetings. There's a limit to what we can do and what we can do without. I'm gonna be in the office.
I can't, I can't.
Be expected to be here all those meetings every night, and it's in final importance of me being there. But, you know, there's two hundred sixty days that we meet in the, I mean, the option in the year.
If I understand correctly, what you're saying is that, that we would set a day and that day would be the day that we would hold our committee meetings, is that correct? It's not an additional meeting, it's just that we would have a set time?
We have that time.
Is that, is that what I'm interpreting?
Human resources would be thirty at four o'clock every, you know, thir- there's every month. Uh, Plan, uh, Parkson, Rick meets on the second Tuesday of them, that, that's, that's the proposal that I have.
There was no need for that meeting, it would be canceled, but it would still be scheduled.
Is that, uh?
They've got the term de-scheduled for the, for the night meetings. That's what it is, that's what it is.
So. Here's the only dilemma I have with this, and it's not my schedule, but is that something that Dennis is gonna be done, be able to do with his meetings that he has to do?
That's what he's saying.
Is that what you're saying? That with your meetings?
You know, it's stretched me so far.
Right, with your additional, with your meetings that you have to do that doesn't include us, is that, is that what I'm getting?
As an example, you know, that's why I pointed out, you have eighty scheduled meetings right now, this would add an additional hundred and eight. Of the two hundred and sixty days in the year that we, you know, have the opportunity to meet, now you're gonna have, let's see, hundred ninety-eight meetings, but.
So I think this is probably, um.
You look at the bonds, there's two, there's two of them, two of the committee.
Right.
And you could have two meetings at the same time, one back to back.
I think, I think the issue that comes in with this though is that sometimes Dennis has meetings that doesn't include us as a council, um, to be at, and so we may not be able to schedule.
It is a meeting, sir.
It, he may not be able to be off every month for that because of prior, I mean, meetings that he has to do as far as like the wastewater and that he has to do on his daily basis.
Can I clarify something? Um, I don't think every committee needs to meet every month.
Oh, no.
Um, you know, certain committees, once a quarter, maybe other committees, once every two months, and then some committees, once a month, like Finance Committee, for example, um, Utilities, for example. Um, as it stands right now, if we were to do it that way, um, we, we obviously already have to meet throughout the year for these committees. I would maybe, uh, then, uh, can I re- can I resend my, my motion? So I'll resend my motion, and then maybe ask, um, as if you don't have enough to do already, Dennis. Um, do you have any thoughts on how, knowing that we're, we're all willing to, to let it be scheduled and, and, and be, uh, flexible, how can we get that to work with what you've got going on right now?
Special work session one oh one.
Well, you know, the idea with work session is maybe that that offers some flexibility if you need to have committees similar to what, uh, Gene said, where s- some members serve on the same committee, whether it be the example of even, I think it was Finance and, uh, Park and Red, uh, that's the same membership, you can have those back to back on a separate night. Maybe you look at the fourth Monday of the month or the first Monday of the month, uh, you know, and set that aside where you can start early in the evening and just march to, to try to complete those. That's what, I'm just saying that may be an opportunity. Again, the problem is each one of y'all got flexible schedules. So, we certainly want to work around your flexibility.
With that being said, I'm good, favorite Monday of the month. I don't know if anybody else is.
Um.
So.
Dennis, was your, was your recommendation for a, uh, special work session?
You know, I think that's an option, I don't know, is, is, probably something you'd want to try before you commit yourself forever, uh, shooting for lucky, maybe it's, we only meet until eight or nine, but I would remind you, we're available like tonight, we can, we, we stay as long as we need to stay. So it's, it's up to y'all, I don't know if that works any different way or not.
It's pure meetings.
Well, I know, for y'all, the problem is, is just what schedule everybody allows.
Once a month.
Yeah.
Well, we might make the decision that people can take off, that's a schedule, they'll work around it.
Well, for some, they have that flexibility and some don't.
Some, some of them have to be here for all the meetings.
Yeah. Joe.
Yes.
So is it my understanding that if we were to consider, um, a special council, that we would be able to, a- as a full council, knock out, you know, um, multiple committee meeting segments?
Probably have to be flexible, because sometimes things are gonna be more involved than others. But yeah.
You may say, listen, listen to.
That's why I said, I'm open to work or not, it's worth a try, that's.
It's, it's certainly worth a try, and, and that will allow us all to provide input, although, you know, the committee, committee leads would, you know, lead that conversation, but it would allow us all to provide, uh, you know, commentary and, and, and feedback as the discussion, uh, goes on.
May I suggest that we look at the, um, the committees that, um, truly need to meet on a monthly basis and put those into a work session meeting or a special council meeting?
Fine.
Since we have to do it once a month anyway.
We don't want to meet just to meet, I know that.
But for example, you know, HR, Utilities, Finance, those that, that really have to meet once a month, we can wrap that into one work session. I'm willing to do that.
I'm willing.
I'm good with that, awesome.
And then that would be scheduled and we can all look around that.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with Dennis, let's try it, let's see what happens, we can change our mind.
First Monday of the month.
There's not work.
Can we do first Monday of the month?
I'm, I'm here, I'm here to, to motion.
I make a motion that we have a, uh, work session on the first Monday of the month for those committee meetings that are essential to meet once a month.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Chip Horst, saying I'm going in for a special work session, the first Monday of every month for committee meetings. Any more discussion? All parents say aye?
Aye.
All votes say no? First Monday of the month, it will be.
What time are we gonna leave this?
I, I'm making a motion, six o'clock.
Are you amending your motion? Adding a new motion?
I'm resetting and amending.
Everybody understands, you know?
Six o'clock, first Monday?
Six o'clock.
First Monday, special work session. If everybody can be here, if we don't need you, we send you off. So, so, does that leave? I gotta keep it legal, right? Okay, I think we finished the agenda. You move, you want. Okay, now, citizens' comments. Alright, that's, Francis, come on.
Mine's peaceful, I promise. Yes, I'm Frances Banks, I sent you tonight's email about Lula Circle. I also, um, brought something else with me because, um, if it can't be paid by Bank of City City, maintain it more properly. Um, as of right now, it should be, it hasn't been graded in a while. The ditch that's supposed to be on the side of the road to help water drain, it has areas where it is not there. Water builds up, especially on a curve when it rains. Um, a lot of the dirt has gone, I guess, into what you would call supposed to be the ditch area, and it blocks the water. If the grader could come and grade it up properly so it would go back towards the crown of the road, would be great. I haven't seen it rock in a while, I've seen spot rocks where it came with the truck, because there's a hole, they drew a little gravel there in that spot. But as far as maintaining it properly, I'd like to see that if we can't pay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I couldn't see who you were, I saw the hand, I couldn't see the face.
I know, I'm not very tall, I'm sorry. Just what God meant. Uh, my name is Still June Benson, I still live forty-seven nineteen off Perlega Highway.
You didn't move in a week, come on.
Uh, Joe, I'd like to thank you so much for clarifying what's in the Constitution, because, you know, thank goodness we have for a city attorney and, and, you always know the answer, and I appreciate that.
Mr. Brissom, I thank you for your generosity for offering to pay our hundred-year lease. I wish you would come to the Historical Society. We're having a meeting this coming Monday night, everybody's invited, we don't charge anything. We'd love to have more people and more input. If anybody's interested in what we do, I have a whole page, it's pretty much a synopsis of what we do, and I can run off copies for you, just in case. And, uh, one of the li- of the lines in here says, "In its bylaws, the Historical Society of Lula, Belton, Georgia specifies, it exists for admission of service to the city of Lula and surrounding areas." And that's absolutely what we do our very best to do. And thank you so much, and tonight was very interesting, I love watching the input and the back and forth. Thank you.
Thank you. Our room.
Hello, room.
Don't tell no rocks at me. I'm from Belton, makes a mistake, he needs to own it. And so, uh, I need to apologize that I had it in my notes, Mr. Horse, how you say, horse? Horse. Uh, there is a line in this Constitution forbidding it, but there is a clause that Mr. Joyce pointed out, I had in my notes, the exception is providing a service to the city, and I didn't say that. And so I apologize for not clarifying and causing some confusion.
We got it clarified and, and this is a godly manner with which you approach.
No, I know, and I, I didn't mean to cause a big scruff and a fuss, I apologize to you, Mr. Chip.
I apologize to you, it's all in my, my heart.
I didn't mean anything personal against the Historical Society. I know they're doing a good thing, it wasn't anything against the finances, I know they're doing their best and everything like that. So I, I didn't mean anything, uh, towards them. So I just want to apologize for anything and confusion or anything like that. As far as the investigations goes, uh, I'm not suggesting that you can't be in because they're obviously warranted and in the laws for that to happen. I'm just trying to figure out how we keep, uh, and I'm not suggesting that has happened, but that someone could just make a fruitless, you know, thing, and the wheels start turning, and then passing, it ends up being no, none. That's all I was suggesting. God bless everybody. Thank you.
I don't know your name, I can't tell.
I'm Tina Millingham, um, I've been in Lula for eight years and.
That is a date, right?
Yeah, that's right.
That was down late at night. Okay, is that correct?
Yeah. Um, so, uh, so when we first moved in, uh, the post office had like a bookshelf in there with books on that people would take and leave and, and like a neighborhood library, um, and then it disappeared, and I talked.
It's, it's still at the post office, if you're gonna pick it up, it's there.
It, it's not there anymore, the bookshelf is not there.
It's used. The books are, the books youngs and I took. I work at the post office, I'm up.
It's, it's gone, and I talked to the postmaster about it, and he said that it wasn't really allowed to be there, and, uh, and people were dropping off other things as well, so it wasn't working. But I was wondering if we could have some like, you know, receptacle, um, like they do with neighborhood libraries, where people leave books and we can pick them up and, and swap them out, you take one or leave one or whatever. But, um, it was a, it was a good community, um, thing, I thought would be good, so. Yeah, I don't know where to go with that, but, um, I'm just, you know, but I'd be willing to like oversee it, make sure it stayed tidy and.
That, that might be something to consider, where the blessed box used to be, I think. I don't know.
Yes, similar, not on the building, I can't, okay.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not asking, I hear. Thank you.
Alright, thanks, thank you.
We love volunteers, though. So, your phone may ring.
Ah, Robert, come on back.
Still Robert, it's Lord Mary Way, uh, again, I'd like to thank the council. You know, Dennis says they help, because, and I like the reputation all the time, Mr. Horst, and the shop has spent researching. Now, do you say you're com- the whole commerce thing may not be the right preparation, I have a business in commerce, they have a lot of employees. I've attended many a lot's meetings with the former city manager there, and I know Mr. Washer very well, and Mayor Clark Hill, know him very, very well. You know, they own their power, they own the power, they own the gas, and of course the water is silver, trust me, I know. They have about three thousand dollars a month in power bills and about five thousand dollar water bill this month, which is unusual. But, uh, then we know. Um, but we need it, we do. Another thing I'd like to say, I'm not up here speaking because I'm posturing for a position of the P public office. I'm for the citizens of Lula, those that will get up and speak and those that don't feel they can. I still call for the resignation, council member District Three, and current Toby Force Johnson, and those in back. Because we will take matters in our own hands. There are ways around this to take care of bullies. And we've been bullied, we've been transgressed against by our elected officials and those elected officials hiring a person that bullies us also, being their strong arm. It's time to put an end to it, thank you.
There you go. Yes?
And then it's on a set five nine zero six, check every street. And I wish I had come in before y'all took the vote on some of the things you did, it may not have made a difference. I agree that Dennis has more to do than he can possibly do, we hear from him every meeting, all the things he does, and all the things he keeps up with. You looked at different things for the different towns that you called about? Yeah, I think a good thing would have been, and it may not be too late, I thought that one of our councilmen suggested that y'all wait to make a decision and have a little more committee work on this, but that didn't go through. I don't think, I don't do very well.
It, it, it did, then.
It did, it's, it's going back to committee.
Going back in, yes.
Oh, thank God, because I couldn't hear, I didn't understand.
Sorry.
I don't know that what I'm gonna say is gonna have an impact. But I have a concern that we have so few people that have control and knowledge of the, of the city. I think if we had more people, you talked of all the towns you went to, you contacted, they have a lot more different people employed in different positions, that takes a lot, a lot off of Dennis, the same as an assistant would. But then that still leaves that knowledge and ability with that person, and if something happened to that person, the city's gonna. And if something happened to that person, the city's going to be in a mess. I mean, I really believe that, and I think that, I think not that I'm saying that our mayor should be full-time. I think he should have more involvement, it appears, in what the decisions are and what's going on. For he knows the way, he may know a penny, I don't know. But I just think if we had people who were responsible for certain departments and things, and they, if they want to present that at council, then it would take some off of Dennis. I know that Dennis does a lot. I can, and I respect him, and I respect each of you. And I know that as few staff as we have, that a lot of work goes on. I mean, even in getting the water bills and getting them paid and that type of thing, that's about the extent of fortune that I've had to deal with. But I appreciate you and hope that that committee, whoever they are, will look at the composition of these towns, not three employees, not four employees, not part of the mayor, but who has part responsibility? And have a reasonable, you may very well, you may spend a little more money, but I think in the long run, we would be better off if we had more people involved in the different departments that's going on. Because you need that knowledge. If something happened to Dennis, if he was in an accident, and then who's going to know what's happened and what to do? And I think that we need more diversity. Thank you so much. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Benny. Anybody else?
And one more thing, I'm sorry. We need to be real cautious of how much we approach in law enforcement, especially putting monitors to monitor the speed. Parking place is a primed premium now, but I don't know that that's going to relieve that, and of course, nobody knows. But I think we need to be real careful with how many citations we think we're going to collect and get. It should not be about that. It should never be a profit thing. I know when I was public judging, I did track the court, so my mom said, "Well, you need to say it, raise the fines." I said, "That's not what we're here for. It's not, it's not a revenue thing. If it costs a county, it costs a county, and we have to eat it." But that's another thing I wanted to mention, too. I'm sorry, I may have taken more than three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Benny. I'm wondering, I just couldn't believe it was in a whole lease and I say a word. Okay. Belton Wood.
Belton Wood. Y'all welcome to hire all the people y'all want to. Go get your twenty more. You know, for his light duty, work the yard. Now, for example, if you keep raising the sewer rates up, you know, when I first moved to Lula, everybody was building around schools and stuff. I think it was probably fifteen hundred dollars with that. Okay, they raised it up, everybody stopped building. Now it's five thousand. Now you want to raise it again to seventy-five hundred. And I guarantee, I know these vests, you will stop the building. We would keep our town at thirty-five hundred. You hire all these people you want. Now, today, you got the money. More you might have. So, sit there. Easy to that, too. And let us grow a little than we are now.
Thank you. Thank you.
Short-term profit for long-term effects. That's something everyone needs to keep in mind. Yes, you want to see it grow. And it's growing all around us. I mean, just like on Belton Bridge, y'all saying this two-hundred-and-forty-four. Why isn't Lula, the city, receiving the benefits from that? Why didn't the city get to approve anything with that?
They're in the city, they're already being approved.
Yeah, I know, you said years ago. But you got all this, but what is the long-term effect of having that many on our sewage system? Our roads? Our roads are terrible. There's hoes everywhere. So, just remember, short-term profit for long-term effects. Keep that in mind.
Anybody else?
Tim Williams, sixty-four seven Main Street. I just have a question. I have approached the town hall, Tangi, and Dennis, and also Mr. Horst, on a couple occasions about filing an open record report, which I did Thursday morning. Prior to this request for open record report, I was told that those records were not made to my, were not available for knowledge, my knowledge, to review, even though it's reports filed against me. And I've gone to municipal court, paid my fines, but I will be filing, just so each member knows, I will be filing a formal complaint with the City of Lula, just to let y'all know. One of my biggest, I guess, disgruntled is a truck that I was forced to get rid of, a yard art truck that I wanted, really, but I was given three days to get rid of that truck. But Mr. Grissom, I am going to address you because my name was mentioned, my name was mentioned in a public report that was produced for public viewing, that I reported him about his yard art truck, which I did. Not that I was disgruntled with his yard art truck. I appreciate art. I'm an artist myself, but yet, I was forced to remove my truck. And then I drove by the other day, and Mr. Grissom is still in violation of this ordinance, and then y'all rewarded him a yard of the month, which blew my mind. And, but yet, I can't get a permit for a house that's distressed or for the building that I brought in because the house is distressed, I'm in other violations. So, just to say, I will be filing a formal report tomorrow with you, Tangi, and will address some other issues with former, previous council decisions against me, my properties here in Lula.
I want to say something about my truck. That's my truck. I don't know if y'all know this.
See ya, I don't.
That is a therapy for me to keep. I can't go out, Joe knows. I don't let being paralyzed keep me from getting out and doing things. That is what relieves my pain. I hate drugs. I have a spinal cord injury. There's nothing to help it. I have my things that I do to help me. And if my truck has caused so much trouble, it has been moved into the yard on Stevens. It's not up on the roadway. Do I need to get a thing from the Shepherd Center so that Eric, this will put it into my truck? What relieves me, what helps me? People have different things in their life. People go to drugs, alcohol, whatever. I go to work to keep me moving. Because I know maybe two, three years, I was in, you know, I couldn't walk. I'm walking because I keep busy. And that's the problem with my truck. Can we end it? Do you want me to get a thing from the Shepherd Center? Where there's an ADD law that allows people like me to have something? Because this truck is ridiculous.
Nervella, can I interrupt you here?
Yes, you can.
Have we not?
Yes, sir.
Have we not decided their truck is now in nonin violation of the code?
It's no longer on the roadway.
That's me. That was my question, sir. It's no longer?
No longer on the, it was only three foot on the roadway, by the way. A lot of people are deceiving on my fence. I didn't put it on the roadway. I put my fence three, have four foot back off the roadway, so that gave me a lot more room up there. The truck is on the three-foot on the roadway.
I thought you were right. I thought the truck was in compliance. I thought this had been severed.
And it's off the, it's off the roadway.
I'm like you.
It's actually made where it's acceptable for me. But you know what?
I'm first.
I'm still going to do my therapy and work on my truck.
I'm first, I call it yard art, and I like that truck.
It is a nice truck, but it's not that.
I saw it, I saw it in the other day. Matter of fact.
I'm going to go get it. That's true.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
My name is Tony Pippin, and talking about yard art trucks today. Street back over here, I don't know if it's in the street. They've backed a lot of yard art. I'm sure y'all know what I'm talking about.
They've, they've already been addressed.
They hadn't been addressed.
In the pickle, it's been addressed.
Okay, that's all I have to say.
That's all I can say, or I think. I think it's all we were about to say, that right?
Say what you want, we...
It has been addressed, and it's still, it's still ongoing.
To add to that, about the marshal, I don't think it should be enforced on anybody in the City of Lula until that mess is cleaned up. If you can't make him do it, you shouldn't impose it on the other citizens of Lula. Maybe if we come together and...
That's what we're saying, too.
I know, but if you're going on, it's not clear enough.
What were your questions about that, sir?
But maybe if we come together as a community, sometimes there may be somebody who looks okay, but isn't physically okay. And if we come together as a community and help somebody, instead of just pining them or whatever, because this is a little community, let's get it. Why are we bickering? Why are we bickering? Are we falling in the ways of the big cities around us? Yes, we are. I mean, it's ridiculous. Can we not come together? Stop trying to big hat, mouse doll, whatever, however it's good. Sometimes it's wrong for the community to say things that's not correct. But can we stop this? If you want to go and help your neighbor, it could be two streets over or four streets over, go help them instead of trying to attack them. I don't care who it is. Come together as a community. And that's all I have to say. It's that. Stop the hate. I don't think it's hate. I think it's more of male testosterone. If y'all, y'all want to know the truth about it, y'all, y'all are making it to where y'all need all, well, I mean, really, you men species are becoming extinct. Have y'all not realized that? Do y'all not realize that? So, I mean, you have so many people who need help. Instead of trying to push them on down, go help them. And I'm not talking about these people that walk the streets every day looking for a handout. There's a difference, and that's a choice. But I'm talking about, you have, you might have, sorry, this elderly lady right here, she may need her grass cut. She can't, she might be having trouble doing it. Instead of going and pining her, get together, because Eric with, what's his name? Liberty. He is the only person I see out trying to help the community. He's one man.
He doesn't.
And he does. He literally goes out and tries to help people. Some people take advantage of that and want to do every little thing for them. I, you know, there's a limit. But have a, y'all don't even need all these committees. Just have a board up there. Meet here this day as volunteers, go clean the parks, clean our people's residents. And see how, how much that helps, because that's what community is all about. And y'all have been stressing me out for months, and I've kept my mouth shut. That's why I have not been to these meetings. I came to the first three meetings, and I'm, 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 I'm going to say something, because you the one did. Joe, are you the mayor? Joe, are you the mayor? Joe, are you the mayor? Let's not make Joe just the mayor. We elected Joe. He needs us all. The committees need us all. So, can we start being a community again? Stop going at it? I mean, we're at a little board in this little old town, and it's just ridiculous. It's stressful, and it shouldn't be. Y'all should be able to go to each meeting and talk about each other in a nice way and not gossiping. Sorry, ma'am.
You're all right.
You're wrong right here, so...
No, no.
You know, you should know.
And say on Facebook. That's what some of them need to do, you know?
You know, I...
Some of them that have Facebook, set everybody else's.
Well, I can say a lot on Facebook, but I don't, because, you know, we all can. You can say the grass is growing green, and somebody's going to make it out to be whatever, something else. You know exactly. We are mature adults. I have a granddaughter here who's been listening to all this bickering. Is that what we want for our children? Have y'all not seen how mean these kids are at school? It's because the adults are bickering all the time instead of pulling together as a community. Okay, now I'm fine.
Thank you, Nervella.
Y'all got me mad.
It didn't take long, did it?
I've actually been a long time ago. The last time I came, I was very angry. I had every right to be angry, and I have not spoken about that because I have not seen it again. But we need to stop this.
You not talk to it often, though.
We do. We do.
Anybody else?
I say we need to support our mayor. We need to support every council member up here that's come, took their time to speak up for us. We should do it in a Christian manner. If we're not going to do it that way, we shouldn't even be here. We should be, just like this preacher back there said. We should, and Denise, she comes from her, her dad's a pastor. We should come together as Christians and love each other, work together, bring this community together. And I don't like people saying, "Joe's got to go, Joe's got to go." He is our mayor, but he was elected to take this position. Whether it's staying part-time, full-time, whatever time, he was elected to take this position, we should stand behind him. We should stand behind each council member that has stood up for us. I want to say I appreciate Dennis, too. I know he puts a lot of work into what he's doing. I don't understand that, nor begin to understand it. I would venture to say there's not one of y'all up there who really knows what Dennis is doing. So, we're going to have to find somebody that can stand behind Dennis in some form or fashion that likes, somebody mentioned, like he has a red. He can't get here. We're going to be, what's Lula going to do? We all can do that.
For the red. There's Donna Dunne Lawson.
Oh, I'm sorry. Donna Dunne Lawson. Don't worry, I'm the best, and we'd like to know that.
I got you.
As a community, we did let Joe in. But is Joe, are you going to present to our community what a community is? Stand for us all, not one, not two, but for us all. You, it's, it's just a, it's up to each individual of us, because you're just a, sorry, a likely official who can be on next election. But we, we need to really pull together. I don't have... Y'all, y'all just really seeing me anger. But this, this, this is true. I'm trying to pull the people. There's no Christians. There, I don't care who said who's a preacher. I don't know who's a preacher in here. But then they say, I don't know.
There are women.
But there's no Christians. There is nothing Christian about what's been going on in here. I don't care if you are a preacher in here, that's not Christian, because you're pulling people apart instead of bringing people together. And you're absolutely right.
Okay, there are women. There are women.
This isn't, this isn't a preacher.
There's a lot of good things that have been said, and I would say that one of the most important things is it's easy to find the problems. It's easy to point the problems out. But it's a lot harder to take the initiative to lead something that changes, whatever you see the problem is. So, I would encourage this young lady that has been speaking, what are we going to do? Saying that there's something wrong and then pointing that out really is the easy part. I have a mom who's eighty-four years old who lives part-time with me, and I have these mama-do lists. Anybody ever have a mama-do list? They're a lot of fun, and I tell my mom quite often, she has nothing to do but make me a list of things to do. So, making lists or pointing those things out, so I would just encourage, if there's things that we see, how do we start organizing that to fix those issues and stuff? I would also say, and this is important, too, that we are a democracy, and so, when we do have issues, this is the forum to air those things out. Joe delivers my mail every day, and I'm glad, Mr. Mayor delivers my mail every day, and I'm glad he does. And whether I vote for him or not, no matter how long he serves, he's going to be, he's going to be the person that delivers my mail. I'm happy about that. And so, as long as he's here, I'm going to support him in that position. But if I have a difference with our mayor,
You speak up.
I should speak up, and I think you agree to that, too. I don't think anything's ill-intended by anybody here, so...
I'm not scared to hear the dangers.
Yeah, I think, I think you've heard quite a few tonight. I warned you already, I warned you.
I'll hear some of them.
You've heard them, that's for sure. But if there are things we can do... But if there are things we can do, you let me know and I'm on board.
What we need to do is make a bulletin right in this building.
We who? That's the first, that's what I'm saying.
I'll make it.
Okay, then you work with, you work with the committee and see how that we can make that happen.
I'll just put on there what needs to be done.
Since it's their control of the building, you probably do need their permission to do it. But find out what those things are.
She knows a mayor too.
And I'll be the first one to, to jump in and say I'll, I'll help any way I can. Because I love this town. I didn't grow up here, but I hope I die here. And I hope right there on Main, six two four one Main Street, you should know that. I hope that's when I draw my last breath, I hope they come hit me up from that place right up there. Because this is the most wonderful little town there's ever been. It reminds me of my hometown. And every day when I wake up, I'm happy to know that I live in Lula, Georgia. And that's just, that's all I've got to say.
Thanks, Sarah. Oh, new place. Did it hurt?
My name is Harry of Lula, sixty forty seven Main Street, Lula, Georgia. And I do appreciate that council. We all need a council. And my husband was not at all saying anything to you about the truck. It was more of an unfairness, we feel like an unfairness situation. I grew up in Gainesville, Georgia, so I am not from Lula. And I'm learning, obviously, things are run very differently in Lula, Georgia. So it's been kind of a shock to me. I just want to let everyone know that Tim and I are not lazy people. We don't choose to have dilapidated properties. I work in a hair salon Tuesday through Friday. Then Friday nights, I'm headed up to a venue where I do weddings. And I am up till usually one or two in the morning on Friday night, getting ready for it. And then also on Saturday night until about the same time, finishing up weddings. Tim and I were never given anything. We worked hard. And so yes, sometimes things are not done exactly the way that they're supposed to be done. We don't do it intentionally. We don't do it maliciously. And so we're just asking for fairness. And there are other dilapidated properties in this town. And if you were putting out our property, ours might actually look good. I realize we are on the road. But you know what? Why does everybody have to keep up their properties? You know, I realize that we can't make people do it. But we can need a town where we can try to make our properties look nice so that others would want to do it and follow the same, same things. And so I'm just, I mean, it's been real hard for me not to say a word. I'm not a person that likes to stir trouble. I'm a peacemaker. And, but I do feel for my husband because he really has not, but now yes, he's got a hot temper. You know, he's got a hot temper. But when you feel like you're attacked and attacked and attacked and you can get one thing done and there's not, there's something else. And I would rather know that somebody on this committee is looking at our property and talking to us than somebody that is not on this committee. We don't need somebody going around looking at our properties and telling other people about our properties. We know it. We know it. We know that I've seen something done to it. We started working on it COVID and I ended up in the hospital, I'm back surfing because I was trying to help do that property. So I just wanted everyone to know that Tim and I, we're willing to help anybody here in this room. We're willing to help anybody. All you have to do is ask. We would never tell somebody no unless it's something that we can't tell a bribe, we can't do our wedding because we gotta go cut somebody's grass. But I'm willing. I'll do whatever. We're both hard workers. And we want to be a part of Lula. But I got to the point where Lula does not feel like a home to me. And it's sad. It's sad because we're trying. We tried. I mean, we've been here fourteen years. And we tried. And I feel like there's been an attack. Like, I don't know if we've been singled out, but we've been singled out. And it's very remarkable. And I'm, I'm hard to be able to say nice things about Lula, Georgia. But at this point, I'm hard to get out of here as fast as I can because I thought nobody likes us here. And that's a hard thing to, to walk out and know that nobody likes you for whatever reason. But I, I do think y'all, I know you have a job that you have to do. But I'm just asking that you please have some favor. You know, before you like just point out certain people and just keep going at them.
Thank you, Harry. Can I build a Chevy's plug at the lodge in Montana? That's another place that could be. It's a beautiful place. Hope everybody's ever heard of it. It's a beautiful place up there. I'll do it for you. Anybody else?
My name is Keith Young. I live at sixteen oh five four Hinton Street. Been here for twenty-three years. I moved in this town and felt like home. My daughter's describing where it's over here, Lula Elementary. My grandchildren's over there now. This is my home. And I've been cursed tonight because I feel a little discouraged. But I do believe in wearing cable pants. I honestly do. Everyone does. And I've had conversations with Gordon in the Walkabout. I've had conversations with Dennis behind closed doors. I've had conversations with Joe. I've had conversations with, with Dean. And it's been very ungrateful to be a citizen of this town. I live here. I worked here for six years. And I worship here in the same church for fifteen years. And I personally wrote the church for us and was involved in many youth meetings.
But don't do it, but, but you have a right to. But during the meetings, we're discussing them ourselves. But after the meetings, you've heard what we guys say, you can hit us in with your comments. Anytime you want to give a comment, you can. I've got an email read at City Hall. I want to send an email.